Two oh nine East Kern Street, Taft, California, nine three two six eight. And I believe I gave you the date already, the eighth of December. And this I need to read to you before we commence. Effective June twenty second, two thousand twenty one, Planning Commission meetings will be held in person with full capacity seating and are also being live streamed at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot YouTube dot com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Period. You don't have to put the period in. A mask are required to be worn by all attendees. Public comments can be made in person and also can be received per the following directions. Written comments may be dropped off at the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at Y Mayfield at CityofTaft.org. Made by phone to the city clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. At this time, the leading, the meeting is called to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Emily Rowe and Emily Phillips, oil tech students from Taft High, will lead us in the pledge.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. At this time, we'll have our invocation from Pastor Joey Pittman.
Let's bow our heads. God, we're so thankful that we can come before you and just know that you have all things in your power and in control. We pray for wisdom, guidance, divine, divine knowledge, Lord, so as we do business for Taft, God, that you just bless us and move on it in the name of Jesus, as everybody said.
Amen.
Thanks, Joy. Okay, it is now time for roll call.
Chairman Orrin.
Here.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
And Commissioner Lykem is absent.
Very good. Item one, citizens' request, public comments. This is the time and place for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Commission may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. Has anyone submitted anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number two then, is which is the minutes from the November third, two thousand twenty one, regular meeting. It's a recommendation is that they be approved as submitted.
All four of you are in attendance, so anybody can make a motion.
I was just gonna say.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Approve the minutes.
Approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Chairman Orrin.
Yes. That passes on a four zero with one absence. Item number three, Planning Commission review zoning ordinance amendment to comply with Senate Bill Nine, duplexes in the R one zone. Mr. Staples, you have a recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Orrin. Once again, this is just an information item as we kind of work our way through adopting something that's compliant with the state, but still keep some of the existing nature of our neighborhoods here in Taft. Last time, I might have caused some confusion because I both tried to review the actual contents of the bill for you and try to show how it could be implemented into our existing zoning code. Instead, today, it's all about us. It's just gonna be, how are we gonna make little changes within our land use table when it comes to residential and be compliant? So, in the staff report I provided, I tried to give you an eight point list of the main edits to the existing residential chapter in our zoning code. And I have it up here on the screen as well. So, to quickly go one by one, so the key thing with Senate Bill Nine is that the state, in trying to increase the number of housing units built in the state to quote unquote fix the housing crisis, is to allow two units to go on any single family property. So, in general, just north of us here at City Hall, we have this mostly single family residences. You could generally say from First Street all the way out to the Airport Edition. So, all of those properties vacant or occupied can now develop a second unit, or if vacant, build a duplex from day one. And this is, becomes effective, the state law is effective January first, but we're gonna be working on our own specific change to the zoning code here. So, one key thing is that the bill never says duplex. It says two units in a single family zone. So, two units can mean anything. You can still have just a single family with your garage and no second unit. It's not outlawing single family uses, so it stays. Instead of using duplex, we're gonna use their terminology, which is two unit dwelling. So, right before, it was only allowed in the R two zone, which is generally in almost every city, allow single family in duplexes, and that's it. We've made it where it's allowed anywhere. So, also multifamily, and now the single family R one zone. But the thing is, now, you can have any combination of two units. So, you can have just the one unit, standard single family, or two units, whether you want to do, call it a duplex or not, or single family plus an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU. That's two units. So, if you, there's a property that has that, and they would want to file to take advantage of Senate Bill Nine, the city can say, no, you have your two units. So, you can just maximize what you have as a rental on that property. Or if somebody wanted to develop that way, they can do single family with an ADU. And that's two units as well. So, we're not gonna write it in such a way that maybe it prohibits just single family, because it's not written that way at all in the Senate bill or anywhere else in state law.
Right.
So, if somebody still wants to do a single family subdivision, one lot development, we'll accommodate it. If somebody wants to do two units, they have the flexibility to do single family, an ADU, or some form of a duplex as well. So, that's how, what these little changes are showing. I did take a step further in that some of our past discussions recognizes some of the small homes or cottage homes, whatever you want to call it, that are on some of the numbered streets that face inward to, or not on the named streets, so Lucar, San Antonio, et cetera. They're facing the numbered streets, and they're a small home on a small lot. So, one thing I've added is, as long as it's on a smaller lot and generally meets the density of the R two zone if it's in it, or the R three zone, if it's more towards Sixth Street, it might be something that we want to consider allowing small homes, small lot, that generally meet the density. It's not technically a multifamily, but with a little bit of that small, tiny home trend that's kind of going right now to get homes on these properties and not prohibit single family in that zone. That's one thing to consider, and I have it as a conditional use generally because single family isn't, isn't allowed in an R three zone. That's this far right column, which you can't see at the top there. So, if you wanted to incorporate some small unit, small property flexibility, that's an option as well to help build more units in the city.
So, if you wanted to do like the cottage style somewhere around here?
Yeah, but like a single unit, like you see some of the existing situation, and there's even some streets, you'll see there's one by itself on the corner, and the rest of it's vacant. It's unfortunately because there's been fire or other damage that's happened. But someone could come in with this situation and it would be now allowed. Now, we could just allow it by right as well, and then have maybe some development standards that ensure it's like a small lot type setup, or a cottage type setup as well.
This still is...
This right here, if you're thinking about this, this is beyond the law. The first two items I talked about.
Right.
Keeping single family and changing duplex to two unit dwelling.
I'm, I'm trying to, trying to think of a few of those locations that do have vacant land right now.
Yeah.
Here in town. So, if the lot were, let's say twenty five feet on a corner with it facing a street, you could take it and put two dwelling units on that twenty five foot lot.
Correct.
If you configured it in such a way that setbacks, would we mitigate setbacks with those?
That is one thing I was gonna go over later, which is the development standards table. But first, I just wanted to show how modifying ours to a two unit dwelling allowance in all the zones gets us going in the right direction that should get us compliant with state law and, but allow all the other flexibility of single family and ADUs and all that to get the two units on a property. So, just so nobody gets overly confused by it, because I just noticed, I think this weekend, LA Times posted something about how there are cities that are pushing back, probably because they're not deep diving in how they can make it work and maintain single family neighborhoods and all that. Just promote single family plus an ADU. There's your two units. You know, because all this ADU law changes that have happened the last couple of years, they've only given those laws two to five years of air to develop, and then I guess they're not moving as fast as legislators would want. But that's, that's development, something new. You need to find the contractors that, you know, see a, a, a business in building those, because you're building only five hundred square feet of space, maybe twelve hundred at the most, because that's the cap that the law's set at.
Yeah, that's the problem, because you need a restroom in it, and five hundred square feet, the bathroom still costs you fifteen grand.
Right.
That's a lot of money in the overall scheme of the building.
So, in a sense, this allowance of two units in a single family zone, in a way, is like that next step that ADUs weren't quite building as quick as the state was hoping it would. So, to get more units, they're hoping, allowing essentially duplexes in the R one is gonna get those residential unit numbers up to have more surplus, or I don't wanna say surplus, more available units for people to rent or buy in the state to fix the, or help fight against the housing crisis in the state of California.
When you say buy to clarify, that means that the lot, you're not, you're not doing lot splits to sell little houses on little lots. They would be configured onto a standard lot configuration of our five thousand or four thousand feet.
Well, one thing I'm not showing yet, and I don't think we need to, is the lot split portion of that bill, because it still falls under the Subdivision Map Act of the state. They still need a surveyor to draw that mapping out. So, even though it's supposed to be handled more ministerially, just through the City Hall offices, someone would still need to hire the engineer slash surveyor to do all that mapping work, and there's still a cost and process to all that. And it would still fall under our existing guidelines that are in the municipal code, Chapter ten, when it comes to subdivisions, so. And we would just rely on the state law to ensure the standards are met, which aren't a lot. There's a lot of caveats, but we don't have many situations where the caveats fit, dealing with rent control and all that stuff. So, so, I covered one on the staff report, two unit dwellings, two, which is accessory dwelling units, which is allowed now in every zone district. Our prior iteration was only single family, but the actual state law allows it in multifamily as well, but only two units. So, yes, you can have a standard apartment complex, but we'd have to allow them to build two little accessory dwelling units that are generally not like the other units on the property.
Would that also apply to a regular duplex?
Uh, duplex, no. It's for, I believe the law states the ADUs are for one to four units. And then, for developments of five units or more, get the two.
Okay.
So, that's where we have, because accessory dwelling units need to be allowed anywhere where there's residential allowed. So, those are the changes right here for that accessory dwelling unit. And the section stays as is, and we have a couple adjustments there as well. So, yeah, let's go ahead and go down to the development standards, which you were starting to mention. So, I brought this up last time, but this is beyond what Senate Bill Nine covers, but to allow some of the unique things that could come out of Senate Bill Nine, what people might want to develop, and then also allowing the small unit on a small lot in the R three zone or even R two. I'm proposing to adjust the minimum lot size for the R two zone down from nine thousand to five thousand, which should be the bare minimum needed for two units to be on that property. And then R three as well, three thousand square feet, I believe, gets two units on that as well. All these other strike throughs you see are development standards setbacks, the width of a lot, the depth of a lot, all that. It got very specific regarding corner lots, but I think that's getting a little much, and we should be treating probably all properties the same, corner lots. The key thing there is making sure there's visibility when you have an intersection and being able to look down the street for oncoming traffic. And a lot of these setbacks specific to corner lots don't necessarily accomplish that. It just creates a greater side yard of landscaping that could be utilized by the property owner. It's kind of a little more dated standard that most cities have, but I'm proposing to scratch those out. And then the last one was, we actually had different rear setbacks, whether or not you had an alley in your backyard. So, instead of distinguishing between the two, allowing five yards, five foot setbacks in all rear yards of every single family home, whether or not they have an alley or not, and same with the multifamily districts of R two and R three, just go straight across with that, and I'm proposing to strike out the alley requirements. The one that we'll probably need a little more adjusting is this little extra part on page eight of the draft resolution, yeah, which is the minimum dwelling unit size. The first two columns are the single family zone. So, we have one thousand square feet there, but I'm gonna have to figure out how to adjust that where, when we would allow two units on a single family lot, the SB nine rules say you need to allow at least a eight hundred square foot unit. And then, as one of the two. So, we may have to drop that down to eight hundred, which would also apply to a standard single family as well. So, that'd be something for the four of you and five, Commissioner Lykem's here, is to, to weigh on that if you're comfortable with dropping that down to the eight hundred square feet called out in Senate Bill Nine. But otherwise, I have the eight hundred square feet in the R two zone, and then R three, I have it down to four fifty for, which is about as small as it gets for a studio or one bedroom apartment type units. And that's called out for these random standards that follow the land use standards. Have all these kind of if, this, that, between the zone, the type of use, the setbacks and whatnot. And item four here is it sets the minimum unit standards for studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom units here. So, I just carried up the four fifty, which is the studio space, up to here, and we'll probably be able to scratch this out in the final draft of this proposed change. So, not to confuse you further, I'm doing both Senate Bill Nine compliance items and then a little bit of cleanup and adjusting with some of these units, just from comments I've heard from the five of you over the past couple of years of different. I'm hearing some flexibility and feeling okay about small unit development, carrying on some of the existing type of small cottage units on those numbered streets. The cottage courts, which we went over in the specific plan workshop, which I'll go over later, our later item. So, I'm translating a lot of that into some of these little edits and changes in this proposed amendment. And the last one is in the ADU. And this is, try not to force yourselves to be experts in all these standards that I'm going over, but one thing I'm trying to do is allow that flexibility when someone does just want your traditional single family and then a rental unit. That's where I've made the adjustment here, where you have one ADU up to a four unit residence, and then multifamily beyond that is allowed to two ADUs. Actually, a single family property can do a, what you would consider a standard ADU. And I had this before when we made this adjustment, I wanna say in two thousand seventeen, where accessory dwelling unit within an existing space, so just carving out part of the existing home. I didn't put the name on it that the state was using, which is this junior accessory dwelling unit. Where basically just, if you turn like an existing bedroom in a way inside out with its own access, like out the back door or a side yard or something like that, that's the junior ADU. And you can have a room inside the home converted where it has more of an exterior access to it and not really connected to the rest of the house, and a regular ADU. Because with a junior, you can't add square footage to the home at all. If you do, that, that ends up being considered the ADU. But you can have both. So, you can have an interior conversion and then add a accessory dwelling, let's say on your garage or whatever space you have in the backyard with alley access and all that. So, you can have both. So, in a way, you could have three units this way. So, it allows more of that flexibility as well. If someone wants some combo option of a unit for a family member and then a unit to rent to somebody else, they could do that with these standards more updated to the current ADU standards. And then...
I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
About this. So, I'm, I'm seeing that, yeah, we got a home that's more than the family that lives their needs. So, they convert an exterior wall bedroom so that you can access that room, and then they could close it off from the rest of the interior of the house.
That's correct.
So, that unit then does not have a restroom.
Correct.
Okay, so, how does, how does the restroom get addressed?
Um, that's where I'll have to add on to that, which is with the junior ADU standards, doesn't require the restroom or the kitchenette.
It's just a place to sleep.
Right, and that's where, we had discussed it back then, and I believe it's two thousand seventeen, when we did these first ADU adjustments.
Okay.
Um, when the state was allowing units down to seventy square feet.
Right.
That's more applied to the junior ADUs, because it's most likely taken maybe an undersized bedroom at smallest, and it's not required to have all those utilities from, to have the restroom or the kitchen situation. And that's where I think it's also not necessarily saying you have to close off from the rest of the house. It just would have its own exterior access, so they don't have to go through the house to access the unit.
Yeah, that was...
Ends up being somewhat like a studio, if you will, and then whatever arrangement with the house to have access to the restroom.
But the... That was what I was gonna ask too, was the actual interior access. A lot of the accessory dwelling units done that are attached to the home when they're done new, they almost all have interior access, because who knows if it's gonna actually be used as a separate dwelling unit.
Right.
It might be an office space or something, and so they always leave a door available.
Never close up the door, yeah, it's, makes it a little too permanent. And then, just if you ever utilize Airbnb type services and all that, sometimes the shared space is an option as well. Same thing would probably be the case with an ADU situation. And it's unique to each property. Some will close off the door, maybe connect if the restroom is adjacent to that room, do some reconfiguration where it ends up being their own individual restroom connected there as well. You only need a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty square feet for something like that, so.
But, but an actual ADU unit.
Yes, if you don't...
Not the junior, an actual one, needs a restroom?
Yes.
And a cooking area?
Correct.
Okay. That's, I'm just trying to clear this, clarify this in my head, so. I can see that it is, it's a viable way to go. You know, families are different than they were thirty years ago.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of folks have a thirty, forty year old child living with them and, and in-law or parent.
Yep.
So, and it gives everybody of their own space, but you can congregate. And, you know, in that sense, it makes sense, rather than having to afford a whole other apartment building or a full apartment at another location.
Yeah, it definitely makes sense. My mom's home, they had a room addition that frankly, if you wanted to, you could just change and put a new door in. There's a hallway attaching it and make that the entrance to one of the bedrooms and lock it off from the rest. So, it would be relatively simple to do.
Yeah, so trying to provide as much flexibility to
Makes sense.
To each unique home that's out there, whatever the layout may be, from adding the junior to the interior of an existing home, to adding a separate unit that's either attached to maybe the backside of the home or a garage off the alley.
I'll say this, you've clarified... I'll say this, you've clarified my thinking about the seventy square foot, which was confusing from before.
Right.
So I appreciate that. Thanks.
And that's where I think I, I probably technically missed it when we were drafting all that. Four years ago, they were really pushing every variation there and we went our own unique way to apply it to Taft. And it left that seventy square foot minimum out. So that's where I'll have to come back and add that back in with the, changing that definition being specific to the junior ADU type that the state has put out there as being allowed in single family setups. And then one thing I did too here was I bumped up the square footage based on the lot size. One thing I noticed, there are plenty of sub five hundred square foot ADU types. But one thing I've seen, a number of cities have gone so far as to put out RFPs to get local architects to create a ready to go ADUs. And usually the studio to one bedroom, eight times out of ten, probably crept over the five hundred square foot. You know, it's five twenty, five thirty, five seventy, somewhere around there. So to get that at least one bedroom, large studio type size, I upped the five hundred square feet to six hundred, which is for lots up to seventy four ninety nine. And that's typically our fifty foot wide, a hundred and twenty five foot wide lots we have throughout majority of the city. This middle one that allows the ADU up to eight hundred square feet would be your three lot wide situation. So the seventy five by one twenty five, which there's a number of those in the city as well. And then anybody who happens to have a larger lot, whether it's in the middle of the city or some of the larger lots on the west side of town, they could max out to what the state law lists as a max size of an ADU, which is twelve hundred square feet. So you almost have a two single family home situation. But on a lot at twelve thousand five hundred square feet or larger, there's plenty of space to fit essentially to single family homes. So that's another little adjustment I made consistent with the ADU law, but allowing a little more space for.
Okay.
For each lot, so.
Would like a park model be okay for a second home?
What do you mean a park model?
They're basically like a single wide trailer, like you'll see them at the camping sites where they basically set them up and they run them out.
Yeah, that's where, that's the last part to go over, which is this. And we can work on maybe having unique terms for it. So I'm calling it alternative designs for ADUs. So a proposed accessory dwelling unit may include alternative designs, including but not limited to. And A here, remember, two of you, if you remember, we went over the RV parking standards and we had a whole discussion about what happens if somebody lives in there type of thing. If you're okay with it and you want to include it into this bill, option one of a alternative design would be an RV, but it has to be on a paved surface, not just on dirt and all that, that maybe parked next to a garage, but has to be in the backyard or side yard, completely out of the front yard area, not in the driveway or anything like that. And then if they connect to utilities, permits would be required or inspector would have to go out and make sure things connected properly and would have become a nuisance. So that's option one. I think what you're calling for might be this one here is some of those towable tiny homes. That's what I have here at option C as well, where the hitch might still be there and exposed and all that. And it could be towed off if need be, if they sell it, but that's another option as well, if you're okay with that. Again, I didn't put here as a standard, but we probably want that on some paved pad as well. And it doesn't ask to be engineered or anything, but something that's just not on the lawn or grassy or dirty areas of a particular property. But, and then same thing for middle one here, those trendy modified C train containers that people are modifying to turn into a unit, that's an option as well. So if you feel good about those, if you don't feel good about those as an option, let me know. That's one thing I've put here is going with some of the trends and see if it sticks in a way.
All right, well, thinking out of the box is good.
Yeah.
Because the traditional just cost prohibitive too many times. But looking at this, we still would have design standards for them and they would still meet the architectural requirements.
Right.
And if I'm going to have a fifth wheel parked at my house to use as a guest house, I need to have it connected to its own electrical source. And I need to have it connected to a water source and plumbed to my sewer and sitting on a concrete pad.
Yes.
All of that's reasonable in my mind. And it's in my backyard, not in the front yard.
Correct. So that's probably what I need to add here. I have more of the description of what the units are. And the only one I got specific about a concrete pad was the first one. So I could probably separate that out as consistent standards to each, on a pad, connected to utilities, permits required. And then just leave these to the, the description or the, the name for it, C train, tiny home.
Mark, is there a way for us to ensure us and assure the neighborhood that we don't allow some tore up single wide to be drug onto the lot and put on these with these configurations and allowed to deteriorate?
That's where the expansion of this section. So if you want, this is something known that I think, I'm hearing that some of you are liking this. I could leave this out for now, just to get the earlier edits through. And we can go through and make sure we have application processes, design standards, like you're mentioning. Because I, I think there's probably some time there to, for us to nail this down and make sure we're getting what we're looking for and as residents, making sure we're addressing any issue any neighbor might have with any of these alternative designs. We don't need to rush to this. I was, I'm bringing this up as.
This is, this is good because Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Four or five years ago.
Yeah.
Was in opposition to this because of how he used his RV storage area, which meets all the criteria that you have here, including the sewer and the power and all of that stuff and in the rear yard. But we precluded his use of that.
Right.
And that's, that isn't fair. It's not an occupancy thing. It's a temporary use. When a out of state relative would come visit, that makes, you know, rather than put it in having to incur the expense of a hotel.
Yeah, but we can include a ministerial review process to make sure all these are set up and that essentially their entitlement would probably be either, if you want them to go a more formal process where the planning department would issue an approval letter and then they have to come back as well and get their permits for, you know, the separate two twenty, whatever they gotta plug into for power.
And I, I would like to see some sort of review process where they, minor fee, but they have to have it re-inspected every couple of years.
Okay.
So it doesn't turn to trash.
So what I could do is, we'll keep it in, actually I'll pull this out and come with, come back with a standalone set of standards where we could just focus on this unique list of options. Because, you know, kind of seeing it left and right with H U T V and everybody else, you know, with these different housing options. And I think the state's probably looking for out of the box, thinking like this as well.
I'm, you know, I've seen a number of the tiny home things. I actually have seen one a little more close up. A neighbor has parked his incomplete tiny home on our back lot. Now, it's, it's away from everything, but one of the things that's kind of fascinating is it's tall. I mean, it's probably the same height as a normal house in terms of a one story house at the apex of the roof. They're at least a good three or four feet off the, off the ground. I'm not sure about needing, I, I noticed you don't have it there. I'm not sure about needing a concrete pad. Sitting, it's sitting on a fairly substantial flat bed with.
Well, we would, I, I think that there's some way to draft an ordinance that says square footage to height ratio that is reasonable. Because putting a twelve and twelve pitch on a twelve foot wide tiny home that's already four feet off the ground, you're gonna shatter your neighbor.
Well, one thing that's.
And, and that's what I was gonna say is depending on its location, I don't think it's a problem in where, where it is. You guys all know where the.
Sure.
That, that back alley of ours is, I don't think it is a problem for anybody. And I'd hate to see someone have to deal with that. Now, in our case, he's just storing it there while he's in Texas earning enough money to finish it. But it certainly has a sense of being bigger than the name tiny home. I mean, it is tiny. If, if you want to see it, it's basically, it's right now, all it is is the flat bed with the, the frame. So you can see what the interior you might look like in, in your mind. You can see where the, you know, windows would be and all that and make, make a guess as to where the, the equipment goes at the front. And okay, where's the bedroom and where's the shower, all that kind of things. But I don't have a problem with it. I just very aware that, that it was, it's kind of a mini tourist attraction at times around here. People in the backyard, every once in a while, a bunch of people back there talking and they're all inspecting the tiny home to try and, you know. So again, I'm in favor of it. I just, that was the one thing that struck me was, you know, where it's located on our property, it's not a problem. But if you were sticking it on one of the smaller lots in the central portion of town, it, it almost, you know, I think a lot of those homes, it would actually overtower. I'd have to measure, but, because it is at some point a two story, a mini two story, but still, you know.
A lot of them have like a little loft.
Yeah, and that's what this one has.
Second story, but loft above.
Yeah, and that's what this one is for the bedroom. It's kind of a lofty area. And then down at the other end, probably where the, I'm assuming the kitchen and stuff are gonna be because that would be over where the gas and water tank and all that would be. It'll also be.
So I think one thing I'm hearing here is height. And again, I know you're not experts of the zoning code, but when it comes to all things accessory items, so patio covers, gazebo type items, I, I wanna, I'm fairly confident ours is pretty standard with other cities where they get a maximum height of about fifteen feet, which is still pretty tall. But most tall fifth wheels, the tiny homes still on hitches and flat beds are probably twelve to fourteen because they gotta clear underpasses or overpasses.
Whatever the state law is about being out on the highway is.
But there is a visual where some of those look rather tall when they're standalone.
Well, and that's exactly it. Where it is on our area, it's not a big deal, but I just could picture it sitting right next to a, one of those.
Part of it is what you said, Mark, is that it's off the ground now because it's not set.
Yeah.
And if it's, if it's going to be on wheels, permanently on wheels, it will be taller than a lot of your thinking maybe.
We can add on to this, reiterating height requirement or height limits, setting it back just so it doesn't seem like it maybe is peering over a neighbor's fence. Since we do have a lot of properties with the alley access requiring fencing, so at least it has some visual of being enclosed in, which would be different from folks who are maybe just parking, storing theirs. But if it's gonna be resided within, it needs to be pulled on to the property. You know, little things like that to have those standards in place so that when our inspector goes out and gets set and hooked up, that they're good to go day one. And then I'll bring up some sort of standard, since you mentioned it, Chairman, about any kind of reinspection or code enforcement insurance of the standards being complied with years down the road as well.
Yeah, and I'd like to see, I mean, in, in areas where it doesn't matter, I'd not, I didn't want to, wouldn't want to limit. For instance, I wouldn't want to limit if he decided that they were gonna, somebody was gonna use that back area, plummet, do all the things necessary to make it a semi-permanent location. It's not bad. So I wouldn't want them to be denied it, but I certainly wouldn't want that same place sitting next to a bungalow on Fourth and Santa Medio or something like that.
I have a question.
Yes.
On, on page ten of this, under the junior accessory dwelling.
Yes.
It says that shall at a minimum include a bathroom.
That's something I'll have to work on.
Okay.
And ensure that those, I'm fairly confident are allowed to not have the bathroom. And that's why I crossed out the kitchen. I think I did not go back and confirm whether the bathroom was required. And I'll have to check whether or not we have the authority to allow that. The one thing the state has done with each of these amendments every year, because there's been every legislative session the last five or six years, they've had a bill that's.
Screwed with it.
Slightly adjusted the, the standards here. And it's been reducing square footage allowance, making sure we don't require kitchens or bathrooms or that we do. So I'm gonna have to comb through that to make sure whether we have the ability to require it. So if maybe we do, we, we don't mind it being a small unit, but maybe we do want at least, you know, what some might consider a three quarter bath or whatever it may be. I'll, I'll come back with this and have that nailed down for you for sure.
I think Kathy's right. A bathroom is important. We already have issues with homeless folks not using facilities. They're using our streets, crubs, gutters and alleys. And as you said, a three quarter bath, I mean, you can do it in a very small space.
And, and there might be some allowances where I, I mentioned that with the junior ADU, it works within the existing four walls of a house. I'll check as well whether it would allow a minor addition to add a restroom for, and still be considered a junior ADU. And then someone could still do a more, if you will, full sized ADU on the property as well. So I, I'll have to get this cleaned up for you and confirm that these are the standards allowed by the state. And then also allowing the options of whatever you see fit as our local standards here.
Do, this is off the subject almost. Do we have an SRO ordinance?
We do not. And I'd have to dig on that one as well.
That's.
That's one thing that I have not noticed in the series of bills that come through. It is very much focused on kind of the single family, adding multiple units on to those.
They're trying to force it into the single family community. They don't really care about the SRO.
And I, yeah.
It's a political thing. Yeah.
And I think, so the, we were discussing the seventy square foot minimum for a unit. I believe that's existing in the building code, which is also in the international building code. And I think that's where you would get the option to try to do some sort of SRO, very tiny unit, multifamily type situation. It probably would apply to some of the emergency shelter, homeless shelter type situations where you could create these inline seven by ten bedrooms, if you will, for folks that would utilize that, shared restrooms down the hall kind of thing. And that's what the old traditional SRO, single resident occupancy, for those that aren't familiar with the acronym. And, but that's kind of, kind of gone by the wayside. You hear about people considering doing what they do in Japan with little pod units. It's never come to be. I think we enjoy a full unit, full bath, at least a kitchenette type situation. But seventy square feet definitely would apply for shelter type situations, even if it's more senior based or whatever it may be. And that's where you get that flexibility in the building code to have units that roll micros, units, shared facilities on a floor type situation.
All right. Thank you.
So that concludes my presentation on this. I think what I'll do is I'll come back with this, but minus the unique ADU situation. So we have something that possibly we can act on in January to at least get the SB nine compliance done. And then maybe have another discussion that meeting as well. And we can start going back and forth on unique ADU situations.
Maybe this, that concept with these folks will help us.
Yes, next.
Is that next week?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one more question. On the parking, it says, it said in here somewhere that each, each dwelling had to have one parking space. Is that right or?
That's correct. What it is, is, and that's one thing that's left out here as well, is the. That's correct, um, what it is, is, and that's one thing that's left out here as well, is the parking section of our code. Um, for the two-unit situation, the state law limits us. From requiring anything more than one per unit, so if someone has a vacant lot, puts two units, whether you wanna call it duplex or something else. We are not able to ask for more than two parking spaces.
That's on the property.
And that's on the property.
On property, so if you had a garage and you converted that to an ADU. Then there would just need to be two sp- off the street parking spaces.
So, no, that that's the thing where where I'm holding firm is that our single-family residential. Use, so a home by itself re- is required to have the two-car garage, so you couldn't convert the garage. Um, and that's where I would encourage folks to add on to the garage as the unit, so move one wall out. Two-story, whatever it may be, but we're not requiring any, uh, we don't have to require any parking for ADUs. Which I think most situations, not many people have an issue with, cause they have a parking pad available, the street, whatever it may be. And it's usually a one be- uh, bedroom situation, but if they utilize the SB nine law where they are doing. Uh, constructing the two units, eight-hundred square feet each, um, that's where they would provide the two parking spaces. Um, the one thing that's unclear is whether or not we can uh, require them to be covered in any way. Um, cause I think that's one thing they're trying to get away from as well, is reducing the overall development cost where. I think the state would wanna just encourage us just to have two paved parking spaces and that's it. Uh, but I'll double-check that as well, but the one per unit is specific to the SB nine law.
So if you do the ADU and a junior ADU and it's attached to a house, you're still only required to have two parking spaces.
The two-car garage for the main house.
Alright.
I have one more question.
Yes.
What what's, what consists of an efficiency kitchen, what does that consist of?
Two burner stove, a sink and a refrigerator of some sort, I mean, those little bar refrigerators you see in motels. That's adequate.
So you'd have to have a stove, you couldn't have like a.
I I don't know if we allow a hot plate, I I don't think, I think it actually has to be a cooking surface.
I'm not sure it requires any more than just the two burners, no oven or anything like that, it's, it's essentially a built-in hot plate.
Yeah, that's.
It'd have to be a built-in, they couldn't use like the.
No. That's a fire hazard.
It may be that a microwave or a micro convection is adequate too, I don't know.
To replace the burners?
Yeah.
I'll check that, cause it's most likely to defined in our building code or the state's building code, um, so I'll check with our inspector and.
It's it's kind of interesting, a European kitchen is typically about a quarter the size of our kitchens.
In 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 cities.
You gotta exit the room to change your mind about what you're gonna have, it's, there's no space enough.
That's true in a lot of the living spaces that are in in cities, it's only really in the country where you still have the ranch-style. Larger kitchens. Heck, people are getting away from galleys and those aren't much bigger.
Mark, does that conclude item three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll put us on to item four, which is a study session downtown specific plan. And zoning ordinance amendment to accelerate housing production project, which is uh. Information only according to Mark and it's a separate clipped-together.
Yeah, uh, what you have in front of you is uh, the two attachments that are on the staff report, I just wanted to have that in front of you. One, we had surplus amounts uh, from our workshop, we had a decent turnout, uh, which was four weeks ago on November tenth. Um, at the transit center, we had a good turnout of folks, um, and I'm just gonna go over what we did go over. And uh, provide any updates compared to when we went over workshop ones materials. So the key thing in front of you is the blue questionnaire looking packet and let me switch the. So, um, I'm just gonna try to go through this fairly quickly and feel free to stop me if you have any questions or anything, um. Uh, yeah, wanna put, uh, provide comments on, but what we started with and um. We were in two different working groups, so uh, I know Chairman Orin and Vice Chair Livingston were at the um, workshop. And you guys were at separate tables with about five people in addition to that, so two groups of six. And so we went over this seven-page form that you have in front of you and I have on the screen. So the first thing we went over was this vision statement, which was trying to do a broad, all-encompassing vision for. The downtown specific plan, which the statement here says is designed to include a dynamic mix of land uses. Ensuring a healthy and balanced community that celebrates the history and culture of the area. Residential, commercial, employment and recreational opportunities are linked together through safe streets, connected trails. Recreational districts and a range of housing options, so it's a starting point, it's broad, kind of like a general plan. And then we move forward into some of the details of the project and I think most folks were uh, uh, pretty. Felt pretty good about that as a starting statement for this project and the details we went into that night, so. As we move forward, the project team, the consultant team that we have on board went over three different. Um, ideas for land use alternatives, so uh, don't look too much into what the colors mean. Um, the yellow orangish colors are the residential side, where this first alternative they presented was uh, more housing-focused. So, when they applied these different um, residential, commercial densities, um, they used like a GIS-type um, software. And it produced uh, nearly forty-five-hundred residential units and twenty-eight-hundred jobs, that's just maxing everything out, you know. Uh, floor heights, square footage, floor area ratios to the limit and it could produce that, you know, reality. The developer comes in with their own project and it's probably something slightly less than that, but this is if it was built out and maxed out, so. The light yellow, it's a little tough to read here, uh, but uh. Typically, that's a low-density residential, single-family type zone, it's called low on this map, but it's actually like a medium where it starts at about fourteen. Dwelling units per acre, so duplexes, triplexes, um, uh, you know, middle-density type residential. Whereas some of these darker colors here get up to thirty-five, forty units per acre, which is more than what our current zoning and land use calls for. So that's how it it produces far more residential units than jobs, but both of these numbers are pretty significant. But again, it's more of the mathematical uh, uh, result of these uh, of this layout. Alternative two, which was more what they called thriving economy, which um. Applied more the commercial office and light industrial districts to the downtown. Resulted in less than a thousand residential units, up to forty-six-hundred jobs. Um, be- most of it because this whole east end got rezoned to light industrial, even the. Um, uh, healthcare district property, both sides of the trail, down on Supply Row. And then all that vacant area we have on Supply Row, the pink there is an office-type use, so you do the math on all that, you max out the development opportunity. On the properties and that's where you get a large number of jobs there. And then the third one that they presented was a blend, but they called it an active community atmosphere where. Um, you have a high number of residential land uses and commercial, um, so you still get fifteen-hundred residential units. And then twenty-four-hundred jobs and between the three, now this, these three here, you can see they put a lot of green over by the best western area. To really maximize the recreational space, um, one thing we can do with a, an alternative is. We have the trail as an amenity and I know last time, a lot of the comments were when we build there. Try to turn some of the development towards the um, green area and connect the spaces. So they went big with this, but I think a lot of people did uh, reiterate at the last workshop, uh, four weeks ago. That we have the trail to utilize and that development should have either their additional. Recreational, open space type areas, whether it's an apartment complex or something commercial and then um. Connect to the trail or at least not um, separate each other or turn its back on each other. But the one that produced the most residential units, I think was generally the one accepted the most. Actually, this map got amended between when they produced this and the final one that the two of you saw, if you recall. Cause this office space actually is now on the uh, uh, healthcare district to recognize their um.
Right.
Development, actually I have that up, I apologize, let me bring that up. Made one little change, I think in the last twenty-four hours, I think this is it here, so it's recognizing the existing light industrial. Uh, um, on Main Street, when you uh, come from the four-way stop sign off of uh, one-nineteen and thirty-three. Um, the existing light industrial on the south side of Main here and then um, the industrial that's right here as well. With the existing situation of the trail and we'll see how we develop, this is a. The site at the far end of trail where um, the soil situation there from past industrial uses. Doesn't make it conducive for residential use, so um, this will probably be uh, mapped out in the purple as well. Um, to get something that will pave over the top and limit the exposure isn't too much of an issue, but uh, when it comes to residential. You don't want that on top of a site with that situation, so um, okay, yeah, see this one has the updated numbers here where. Um, the focused housing, thirty-eight-hundred residential units and twenty-two-hundred jobs, where you get a little more of that blend. Uh, recognizing the central um, employment area of downtown between second. And actually, I think the final one will have it all the way to tenth with uh, all the other commercial uses there and the restaurants and the gas station at the end. Um, but I think most people were feeling this combination, which provided. You know, that good blend and highest uh, output of residential units and uh, commercial space that produces jobs. And this is where I think we will get in a little more in- interactive here. Sorry, architecture. Zoom out so we could fit all the graphics in. There we go. So they also um, brought up um, some examples of other downtown areas and the um. Architecture that's found there. Now, we're one of the few areas in California, which I'm sure you've noticed, we don't have a lot of the Spanish colonial or Spanish anything compared to most of the state. We do have a lot of, they have this labeled as modern, but um, this one in the upper left are both in that American mercantile look. Um, a lot of San Luis Obispo has it down, they're downtown, so does uh, Paso Robles. Um, your mix of the brick facade or full brick construction with some of these others that are more of the facades in between. The corner units, we have our own uh, uh, building at Fourth and Center that looks very much like this one here, maybe minus the um, columns there.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would've called that modern.
Right.
I'm not sure where they got that idea.
I believe they had a um, a more contemporary uh, architecture there and when I discussed it with them that. Some of our existing is what I think a lot of people in Taft really love here from the bank and all the buildings up and down Center Street where. Yeah, that, that style from pre-fifties, um, that is still here and with us today. Um, if somebody wants to come with something new that's Spanish colonial, I don't know if it's something that we would necessarily wanna turn away or reject. Um, but it's just not necessarily an existing condition, this is kind of the theme of downtown right now.
The medical building on um, north across from the Chevy dealer.
Yes, oh, that is probably our lone Spanish.
That's it, and then where Dr. Tang's office is too, I mean, it's painted differently, but it has that type of.
The old hospital.
The hospital was, had a little bit of that Spanish architecture to it too, so, but that's about the only.
I don't know if there's any of these four that any of the four of you necessarily would reject or steer away from. Now, this is more of your, if anything's modern, it's the lower left. Uh, pretty standard for all the shopping centers you see popping up throughout Bakersfield and Kern County and the rest of the state.
If it were up on on the rails in that area, I wouldn't have a problem with the Craftsman up there.
Right.
Because that's still an older design and I think fits the overall sense that what I was looking for. Which I think the, the one that's marked modern and the American mercatill is more of what our Center Street is.
That the folks that are at home watching this, th- this is um, incentive to come to the next meeting.
Yes.
Because this is discussing, we had some really great comments from people who don't come here and. There was a gentleman that came there and he knows the area well and his, his comments were appreciated.
We had a great turnout, uh, a number of the uh, business owners on Center Street showed up, um, some that are more property owners. In the downtown area of Taft, um.
And investors represented too.
Yes. So, we'll definitely be refining this or locking this down as far as what kind of. Style, identity, architectural harmony through downtown and then as it moves southward across Main Street to Supply Row. Um, and we've been getting one building at a time with the the Dollar General and um, the uh, grocery outlet. So, as we get each project, we'll, we'll need to steer them in a certain direction with some of the architectural style, so if we can nail this down. We have that specific plan document adopted of what we're looking for and if we're wanting to lean more one way, if you're along the trail to get some of the. Trail, rail depot, Craftsman style that we have from the Transit Center and the de- old depot building that's still there. Um, that's one thing we could do is try to guide them and create districts that have these styles and, but still allow some. Mix that um.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily, not necessarily in favor of like a design review committee, I think the planning commission should be doing that. But having some guidelines of, that are design, design review type. Is is part of what this I think is leading to, I mean, you know, whether it's, I I don't, I don't like the idea of of um. Making a decision all the way down to the color necessarily.
That's, that's what the Irvine company does.
Well, yeah, and and a lot of the developers that I worked for, they designed their entire community.
Yep.
Um, to to fit, uh, my, one of my best friends designed a committee, it was all French provincial. You know, and, but you're designing the entire area, so I think we can do that for our our raw land portion. Um, I just definitely wanna preserve the sense of what Center Street is and I thought that was the input we got from a number of the business people. Was, you know.
So if anything, very specific we'd get, we'd probably wanna push this in the upper left for. Center Street needs to be staying this way, but one block off, whether it's North and Kern or Main and uh, Supply.
I'd wanna be a little more open to other, because Craftsman's still a gorgeous look. And it's still, in my opinion, it's almost a hundred years old, so it's not exactly new. It was a good turnout too, it really was, the people in our, in my group, I don't know about you, but were, had significant amounts of real comments, um.
Well, and it was a, there's a learning curve that everybody goes through in these, so. It was beneficial for them to be there.
So, another piece they went over as well was uh, the amenities that add on to the structure, so you have the structure that. Is housing whatever, residential, commercial, has this architectural style, but then they were soliciting all of you for what. Other features do you like, um, the wayfinding signage, unique lighting, uh, trees, public art, anything like that. Um, is there anything in particular that. The four of you uh, would like to see there or find is missing and just to kinda get this started, one thing that I think came up more than once was. How the planners on Center Street stop at a certain street in each direction, like they would like to see it get to second on the one end and maybe even all the way out to tenth. As another, so that'd be under the shading, trees, landscaping, is there anything else that the four of you would uh, like to see on Center Street? Or in the new developments?
Well, I'm, I'm definitely a public art fan, but I've got a really wide um, definition, so. Uh, sometimes I can use the term street furniture too, but uh, uh, the um, the thing that I liked about it was. We already have a lot of that on Center Street and it wouldn't bother me if we expanded, we're talking about the old oil well equipment.
Uh, that's indicative, it's kind of the culture of the area.
Right, and and so, things like that, that that. Right. And and so things like that, that that recognize it, I consider that broadly part of public art. Um, or the other term, um in order to, first of all, I think it, I don't know how many people I've seen uh who are from out of town who talk about having looked at those and finding it is sort of a fascinating thing for a quick walk down Center Street. I wouldn't mind seeing that expanded as well.
If you're gonna do more of that, you need to capitalize on the old guys that know what that stuff is.
Yeah.
Cause a lot of us don't.
Get the proper.
I think I recognize the Hughes tool and die drill bits, but that's about it.
So on the public art side of things, I I know we've talked over the years, both within here and out in public and all that, where uh we have a number of buildings that are primed to be mural spaces. Um, Grocery Outlet was able to put one on their uh facade along um uh Supply Row. Um, is that something we'd like to be featured and shown? So.
Yeah, it, I I I would like to see that, maybe even the backs of the first buildings in the alley.
Right, okay.
We use uh as maybe public art places for kids to go in. I don't, we don't want to see it tagged in graffiti.
Right.
What we'd like to see is, you know, more of an expression of who.
So even the sites that aren't seen as much, but if you ever are traveling down alleys, you can see it.
And I I think it um, that would prevent some of the tagging that's currently going on.
I I don't know if you can access it, but um i- if you were to Google Art Alley, it's in um South Dakota. I'm trying to remember the name of the city, the one near, it was, there's an entire alley that's dedicated to basically graffiti art.
I've heard of that.
And it it it's kind of a rolling thing where people come in and it might be the same piece of art there for a year. And then something comes in and covers it over and it's not crummy art. It's actually pretty cool, including all the trash cans and everything else gets done. And there's a few places where I think the backs of buildings in some of the alleys would lend themselves to that. Of course, the thing is, you have to have the permission of the um the owners.
Well.
But I think that's a program that would be worth considering. And there's a.
I've talked to a few of the building owners there on Center Street. And uh the Braun family is conducive to it. Um, I know that the Frontier Building, you know, that's a big slate to
Yeah.
do things on. And the old Wilsons and the old furniture store and the old JCPenney. You know, we're talking maybe just going there ten feet high and let them have at it, something that the art departments at the college and the high school could get involved in.
Some of our local artists.
I don't know if Maggie is willing to go there and put up art, but she might.
But she might be willing to help coordinate or do things with it. Um, what's her name? Um, the one that did a lot of the art stuff uh during Oildorado. Um, and she does the library.
Oh, is that Maggie Blackwell? Or Maggie or Megan?
Not Maggie.
I'm not just talking about Maggie. I'm talking about Megan. Um, you know, she's very involved in in in, she and Maggie both actually in a number of those things, but.
The other, the other thing I'd like to see is an amphitheater. It doesn't need to be, you know, we're not talking the Hollywood Bowl. Uh, we're not talking uh that, but I I've often thought that something in the area of the Fifth Street Plaza, more like a band shell from the thirties, forties, fifties and parks down in the LA basin. I mean, most of the cities had something like that there. And that it would draw, you know, an opportunity for young people to be in the community, participate and demonstrate.
Would that be a modification to the current stage?
I was gonna say the one on Sixth on the trail.
I would, I would say that would be acceptable, but I would much prefer that we modified the um old B of A building and use that parking lot as open seating theater out onto that Fifth Street Plaza area. I think that would be.
Okay.
Cut the building in half and make it a band shell.
That's out of the box.
That's a million couple hundred thousand, yeah.
Uh, more outdoor seating for like restaurants. Cause like cruise night, if unless it's super cold or just super, usually if it's hot, we don't care. We're sitting outside. You wanna. I remember when uh it first started up, kind of this year, we was always scrambling for a table at Mica Sita or Pizza Factory or or Black Gold. Those are packed. Cause you could sit outside, eat, watch everybody, take your time.
I think there's, I think there's actually the ability to do some of that.
Yeah. You don't need like a big space. Look at Black Gold.
He's gonna say on a temporary basis because the um, some of the businesses have permits, if I understand the right to encroach onto the sidewalk. Um, as long as they allow enough space for ADA compliance. So it's actually possible to do that. People just need to understand what the rules are to do it. And they're not that onerous either. They're just, you know, m- making sure that there's a uh path for somebody to get through. Um, I know that um for a lot of big events, um uh Old School had has, you know, their Friday nights, a lot of times they're out there with their chairs and the fireplace and and all that.
And they always got people out there.
Yeah.
And I I agree.
Get that outdoor area with a little fire and some food and drinks.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm definitely in favor of any place that can do that.
Is the Alleezen doing that now some too?
No, I don't think so.
They just kind of meander out onto the street.
Yeah.
I I think that, you know, um we're supportive of any of that stuff that makes sense.
Okay.
Really.
See if uh you get a developer, tell him to bring it and we'll throw ideas at him and try to help how we can.
One thing the um consultant has uh brought to me is is the imagery to go with the names as well, just so we could see, you know, we saw the architecture and other items, but we haven't had much of a um when it comes to the amenities side. So for that next workshop, I'm gonna uh make sure they bring enough visuals so everybody go yes to that, no to that, or yes to it all, whatever it may be. Um, so, cause we can all have slightly different definitions or examples of what we like with this. So that's uh something I'll push for them to uh provide examples at the next workshop. So we have that nailed down as part of our overall uh specific plan as well.
I'm sure this will be evolving. As it happens, we'll find things, okay, we didn't like that or we like that and.
Well, that's the other, that's the other part of this. It's not really directly related to this, that the CPAT recommended, which is actual programming of events and other things. If you, if you can do that on a regular basis, you begin to find out what things work and what things don't work. Um, where events should be held and maybe where they shouldn't be, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, but because they are temporary, you can always sort of work your way back. I think that's u- ultimately something we should be encouraging, but I think that would end up being, I know, the Economic Development Committee or somebody like that who would be more likely to lead on it. But you're right. I mean, things that encourage trial and error makes a lot of sense.
I think it is, wh- what we've stated is that it's obvious, the community goes for this stuff. They like this stuff.
Yeah.
Because all the events during Oildorado were sold out and well attended.
Yeah.
And if you were to have a Devinder's Place open once a month for some sort of concert, it would be used and attended.
Right.
I, I said that and a lot of my friends said that. If they did something even twice a year, one in the spring, one in the fall, it'd be sold out every time.
And there'd been some.
People go in, it would keep revenue coming. It kind of keep a a carrot dangled.
I was gonna say, there'd been some recommendations at the Economic Development Committee um that we do something similar on a three-day basis to Oildorado. But you need to find some other people, I think, to actually do that work because the Oildorado Committee is usually killing itself for five years to do
Yeah.
the big event. But if we can have.
Well, it's, it's events promotion. That's a big business and it's a very time-consuming.
Yeah. And so if you can, if we, I think though that the idea that you do some things maybe that happen every year that are connected in some way to the Oildorado events.
The uh people from the well help, I did coordinate and and do some of the advertising or whatever they did. Uh, you know, they they constantly have concerts and or comedians. So it's like, hey, go there on a Friday and then come out here on a Saturday. You know, so if you get with someone like that who could promote it and get the people, let them make a little money.
So I think a side note on the amphitheater element that they listed there is we're wanting a a little bit more venue space, venue-type entertainment activity. And as we all know, uh, the um old Taft Chevrolet has now hosted two different uh Oildorados. And then it's had some one-off events from proms and other things. So we'll definitely work with them to see if that can uh be officially fully converted to a venue space. So there's more um activities there. So I'll work with, whether it's the Oildorado folks or uh Devinder who owns the property and all that, so.
And and I also agree that the location where we really do already have a place for the bands and stuff like that, th- th- along the rails. It just needs to look better. I mean, it looks like just a big concrete slab laid out there.
At existing stage.
Oh, let's, let the kids paint it. It's all concrete. I mean, when I start there.
Eventually having a shell, like you said, for sound. Shell type over the top of it, um something like that. I mean, it's not like, it's not already partially there. It just needs to be looked at.
I think a uh, I know it has its own set of problems, but the water feature would be wonderful here. And parents, I talked to someone yesterday that she says she's having such a hard time getting her kids off of their electronics. And I think that that's something that would get the kids wanting to go outside, wanting to go on the um, maybe on the path.
Hmm. Uh, just like some of the other items that are just off the path from the small oil derrick and the
Yeah.
the bulletin poster, um post site and all that.
Yeah.
Water feature along the trail.
Something like, I don't know which, I don't know if it's Jastro Park, one of the others over in Bakersfield, a couple of them.
Pushing that, yeah.
They have the uh.
It's a squirt park.
Yeah, I I I mean, that would be, I think kids especially would like that. And if it was someplace along the rails, it would make a a nice addition um for a family if they're out. And frankly, if we've got housing somewhere along there, it would be nice for the kids for that too. So I think it's a great idea.
One just closed down now, so.
Well, talking about housing, the next item that was on the form, if you're on the uh, I've never remembered, but sixth page of that um go back to it real quick.
Yes, the housing claim cards.
It's the housing preference where it just in text says, which of the examples do you prefer from cottage courts, the townhomes, duplex and the like? And for the chairman and vice chair that attended, if you recall, these were actually cut up into kind of like little play card type things. And I know in the group I was looking at, they were just kind of used as examples, but I saw some, if they weren't quite contributing to something, they were sorting through like playing cards, like they liked these three, but not these three. So um, on this part, uh it just because of me knowing how the the city's laid out, the townhome and what they're labeling shopkeeper adaptive reuse, these two are specifically designed with all of our twenty-five foot wide by a hundred and twenty-five foot deep um properties throughout downtown and the city as a whole. So to me, those seem to fit our layout. Whether it's necessarily use, we're looking for the rear loaded garage or whatever may be, um, that's for another discussion. But is there anything out of these that, excuse me, that you uh uh like, prefer, or one that you don't think quite would fit in the downtown area or even Long Rose the Trails? Or is this the um menu of residential options or even mixed-use options that we should include into our specific plan? Cause any given developer may want to bring in a motor court or the garden walk-up and.
Well, the the motor court looks a lot like something you would use if you were gonna try and face the trails, on the rails to trails. Um, I know there's other places, but the one I remember is Ladera Ranch. Uh, has uh that sort of a interior parking. And there's, you know, the stuff on the street is, and there's a couple in San Diego, the same thing, usually.
And that's one thing with a lot of these uh examples is that uh what we're talking about in the zoning changes earlier is not requiring as much parking, you know, sufficient per unit and just enough uh um visitor spaces or relying on the street to um provide the visitor space parking. So that's one thing we'll be getting into more detail with each of these uses in the next workshop. But as far as a look, feel, how it'd fit into um the downtown um or as a new development along Rose the Trails, how are we feeling about these seven?
I I would, I I think there's room for all of them. Any of them can be done and done well.
Yeah.
What I'd like to see additionally is in the motor court there, say at your street entrance, those rather than being residents on the main street, there's no reason those couldn't be small shops for, um, you know, like M M one, yeah, like M one half zone for saddle maker, a leather artist, an uh somebody that does um iron work, you know, maybe they're making clocks and statues. Um.
Well, that's kind of your shopkeeper, isn't it?
We're not talking a foundry because that would be disruptive, but you know, small woodworking uh buildings. There, there's nothing like that here.
That's actually the small-scale manufacturing that I've
Yeah, it's a.
seen become a more popular, I mean, whether it's done in old, some of the old buildings on Center and Main or whether it's part of, um, the shopkeeper unit has been pretty popular uh in a number of places.
Well, what I'm saying is though you could put the business there and John could have a business there and I could live straight across that parking lot from him and we can get along.
So one thing that you're bringing up and I'm hearing is it's already somewhat of an existing condition, but when they went through this uh land use alternative um exercise, I think one thing I'm hearing is uh maintain as much of that, whether you want to call it flexibility or range of uses or whatever may be where everything from um the healthcare district property to even some of these um light industrial, except where maybe the soil and property isn't suitable, to still allow some opportunity for residential if it
Yeah.
no longer fits the site. So one thing we want to do overall with this is still allow some of that residential flexibility or in residential areas, allow some of the commercial use flexibility is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
That's my preference.
Okay.
We also have some examples of some of these on the ground. Um, the cottage court.
Yes.
There's a couple of places where at least it's sort of that, there's one on, I think it's Santa Medio Street on, in the six-hundred block with those little white cottages and the whole backside of, has an alley of garages. Um, there's a site, it's not quite cottage, but it's right next to um Holland Inn, the apartments there. They also have the.
Warren Avenue had a fire about a year and a half ago and the guy's gone in there and done a real nice job of bringing that back. So it has a good appearance. I think there's eight units there on a seventy-five foot lot.
So on those cottages, uh and when we were talking about small, like single family in the prior item as well, that tends to be just outside this boundary we've created for the downtown. So uh again, what I think I'm hearing as well is see if some of that can fit in the downtown.
Yeah, if it's possible.
In the overall zoning ordinance amendment that we're working on as part of this project, cause we're focusing so much on downtown, there is the citywide ordinance amendment.
Right there, Mark, on um, I think it's Seventh Street. And um Main, perhaps?
Yes, the small.
Behind the church that's on uh Center Street, there's five, there's five small homes on a decent lot. They all have a small yard out back and, you know? That's, not everybody has to be in a big home. A lot of people don't want to be.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Behind Mission Apostolic, on the little.
Yeah.
And there's, there's the same thing um across the street from Taft Primary where you've got the three little cottage homes on um Second.
Yes.
Uh.
Three or four of them right there, the white uh that face.
And I think there's a garage set up towards the back. I don't know if it covers all of them. But I'm, I'm definitely in favor of those kinds of of development. Um, I'm trying to remember the the term for it instead of just a zoning, um, was an article in the city.
Well, there, there is another side which our plan probably won't go towards it, but is the uh forum-based zoning. And what it is, is there is some typical zoning where it's heavy on, you have to meet these setbacks and all that. Well, forum-based zoning is more about the design and architecture of the building and less about the specifics of how many units and things like that. Um, and that's where I believe what our consultant's doing with these right now
Right.
is kind of blending those two, where you're getting the architecture and the housing type you're looking for. Um, but still incorporating some of the traditional setbacks, height restrictions and. restrictions and things like that.
You can see some great examples of that, uh, from Oak Street going east and the 21, 22, 23, there, there's, some of them are apartments, some of them are really big houses.
Over in Bakersfield?
Yeah, over in Bakersfield.
A lot, I think Lompoc's another great example. You have a nice, you know, 2,800 square foot house and right next it's a decent triplex that's well maintained.
Yeah.
And they have existed that way for 50 years.
And we're feeling comfortable with the mix and blend of all that up and down north and center and Santa Medio. Okay?
And, and frankly, i- i- expanding it out into the rest of the, the down, you know, the central portion, because that housing stock is so old that opportunities may be to do some things that both do affordable.
Get another unit out of it.
And, uh, uh, would, to me seems to me an ideal opportunity. There's so many vacant lots already from houses that have either burned down or just, you know, fallen apart that some opportunity to do some things like this where you might have more units, but it doesn't look like, uh.
Big bulky high rise of some sort.
Right.
So along that line, the last element here, which I think we went over a couple months ago after the first workshop, uh, was what kind of height are we, uh, comfortable with? So they had one, two and, um, three plus stories. I do recall, uh, the five of you were discussing this where I think most of you felt comfortable up to three, but there was the little bit, when you're getting to three, you can start casting shadows on neighboring properties and.
Yeah, that.
How, how that could affect, uh, one neighbor or the next.
It depends on where it's at too. And if you're, if you're all by yourself and you're looking to expand that, you can go that height up to a certain point. But if you're between two one-story houses and you build a three-story.
Yeah.
That could be a problem.
Yeah, I think that the articulation needs to be based on i- in, if it's infill, maybe you can go a little higher than, than what's already there. But up in the downtown area, I think there's opportunities to go, I mean, three stories would be not a problem even on Center Street.
Like right there where, uh, the carnival just was.
Yeah.
You're not gonna bug anyone by building a five-story.
Okay.
So I, I.
So I think.
We're, we were, at our table, we were talking about them all being walk-up rather than needing elevators. And three stories is kind of the limit on walk-up.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Us in California.
Correct.
Um, versus, you know, the six, eight stories in, uh, New York City.
There's a lot of big cities that, that boy, once you, you know, you get a podium, four-story over podium or something like that, you have to have an elevator.
But are we feeling comfortable with above three stories main to front? Cause you have the raw land, it can.
Yeah, I, I think what we need to do is draft something about the building shadow, you know, as.
I think it'd be us per, like, if it, depending on where they wanna build it.
Okay.
Like I said, each one would have to be evaluated.
Yeah. And, and the problem, of course, is Front Street, you're right across the street from single family.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, homes. So you put a four-story or five-story there, that's a problem. Whereas if you were talking about going along some portion of, um, uh.
Supply or.
Supply Road or Main, then you're probably okay. Uh, what I think we need is, is more of a flexible, and I don't, those are harder to do, I know.
Right.
But a more flexible description so that a developer can get a sense that, okay, I'm not going above three stories in this area, but in this area, you know, maybe a five story if I wanna spend that kinda money.
Could it be like, if a developer wants to build on this lot, we let everybody know within, I don't know, a, a block or two, hey, do you wanna build something three or four stories high?
Three, three hundred foot notice, isn't it?
Say yea or nay because.
You're gonna be.
The current noticing, uh, range is 300 feet. We can, where there, there's. Kind of an if then, if you're trying to exceed a certain height, you can do it, but you need to provide more amenities, uh, require more noticing based on potential shadow effects, um, things like that where, um, you know, can kinda have this not, uh. Story, five-story design that might work. They could still propose it, but variances are involved or unique design standards are involved. And maybe I could relay back to our consultants to.
Is the motel four stories?
It's three.
It's three.
It's about 42, 43 feet.
And you can, you can guess that if you put a three-story behind it, that it would might almost look like a four-story from the, from that side because you've got the downhill slope. So.
And part of it too is, uh, what they call the parapet, which is.
Right.
Extra wall sticking up that screens all the roof equipment. So you don't see all the big bulky, uh, air systems and all that. And that's where you get to that, um, probably 10-foot floors and then, uh, you know, eight to 10-foot, uh, parapets to screen all the equipment up top and also provide, if you noticed, the Best Western sign is almost perfectly visible over all the downtown building.
Yes.
Right at that right height where you're at Sixth and Kern, you look over and you see the, their sign three streets away. So there, there is a rhyme or reason to a lot of that height to building. So.
Yeah.
So what I could do is I'll, I'll relay it back into our consultants and maybe there's something in the forum based zoning where, um, one thing they do too is that you could be three-story, but not the entire envelope of a building. So it maybe has to step back in some way with some architectural feature and only part of the building could be that tall. So.
I just saw a deal about Sears Tower, you know, and it's 110 stories, but the entire building isn't.
No.
The three parts of it are like 55 floors.
Yes.
So it, you know, it lends itself to it. That could be the, not, we're gonna go 55 stories, but you could have a section that's, how tall is the Fox? Holy moly, that's 70, 80 feet.
Five, six-story building at the tallest point.
Yeah.
With the sign that you can see.
And, and I don't think it overshadows anything particularly because it's.
Is it what it's.
Shadows into the alley onto the m- Masons, right?
Yeah, and then the Masons is the three stories.
Yeah. So I think that's probably, um, a good exercise to have since we're getting more into building form and all that, uh, for the next, uh, workshop is really seeing what three, four, five stories looks like, have the discussion about shade and shadow or, or just towering over a neighboring property. Um, and then with some of the, the, um, terrain slope that we have here in Taft, uh, what you were mentioning with, uh, something that's up at Supply Row could be just as tall as the Best Western, but their roof line still is above them and they could put their own sign that's still just as visible. So, so seeing the actual visual of that will definitely help all of us.
The guys built.
A lot of development done that's semi-tuck under. So you excavate a little bit, four or five feet, and that's your lowest level. And then the rest of it goes on top. And it's pretty easy to achieve four stories that way.
Yes.
Not being obnoxiously tall.
You could practically eat, I mean, one of the most easiest ones, because it's already dug out almost, is the section along Main Street between 10th and.
Right.
Seventh. I mean, it's already five or six feet, uh, lower in, in, in the center of the lot than it is on to the road. I'd be perfectly happy if that was four-story because I don't think it would be a, an issue for anybody. And it's, it's near the business portion of Center Street where I don't think it would be a problem for them either, to be honest with you. It wouldn't, you wouldn't be dealing with, uh, any housing issues particularly. So.
So generally that's where the meeting ended. Um, for those of you that attended, I was preoccupied for the last 20, 30 minutes of the meeting. So, uh, what I'll do is you, all of you provided great comments to take back to the consultant. I actually have a call with him tomorrow and, uh, definitely will give him plenty to work on over the holidays and come back, uh, next year with, uh, um, some clear direction of when we have our next meeting, uh, or workshop, excuse me.
Thank you.
And it will definitely be in person again, probably at the transit center again. So, um, one thing I'll say is keep the papers you have. Um, definitely share them with, uh, folks that might have questions on the project, but, you know, they're not sure about showing up to a workshop, you know, not everybody, they wanna have a comment, they could call or email me directly without being in the workshops. Or, uh, just as a reminder, um, the, the workshop was not recorded, but all the materials are on that project website. Um, so they could just go to the website, which the link is on the city website, um, in the planning and development section. So all the materials, it says checkout workshop too, but all the presentation and materials are there. So people go download it and view it online. And if they have any questions, I'll have a phone conversation with them if they wanna stop by. I can have a conversation with them as well or anything else they wanna share, uh, that I could relay to the project team, especially unlike the amenity side. Let's go ahead and get in the weeds with the details of whatever it may be, street furniture, bike paths, whatever it may be. Um, I welcome all comments on that. So, uh, share all this with them or otherwise just send them my way and I'll have the conversation with them as well. But definitely encourage them to stop by the third workshop, which we're hoping will be early next year, sometime February or March.
Good.
Okay, great. Thank you. That concludes item four and moves us to item five, which is planning commission, um, meeting schedule for 2022. And Mr. Staples has a recommendation. I'm sure he's consulted the calendar, so.
Yes, Chairman Orrin, it's December, so, uh, I've traditionally had this item for the planning commission to set their calendar for the next year. Um, so for 2022, you'll see both on the staff report and the resolution, the dates, um, that the first Wednesday of the month falls on. Um, if you notice, um, there is only one unique, uh, first Wednesday, which is June 8th, where it lands on the second Wednesday, um, as it would be immediately succeeding the first council meeting of the month. Um, and then the only unique one, which I'll leave it to the four of you, is to set the January meeting only because of, uh, with the holidays coming up. Who knows what everybody's schedule is. Um, so the first Wednesday is January 5th or the third Wednesday is January 19th. And you can stick with the first Wednesday and we'll, um, have some discussion items. It might be a slightly limited meeting, whereas the 19th, we might be able to have that extra week or two out of the holidays to, uh, uh, put something together like the, uh, ordinance amendment that we were looking at earlier tonight.
I, I don't know if it's automatic, but it seems like every year the city council cancels the first meeting of the, uh, January anyways for the same reason.
There'd be a meeting on the fourth, right?
Yes, there are meeting on the fourth. Uh, it's not as limiting a week, the week before, when we put all, everything together and publish it and get it out to everybody. So it's not the, uh, uh, most difficult week to put a agenda together.
Right.
So that's why we didn't wanna necessarily say, oh yeah, we're, all things are off. I have a feeling city council will have a meeting. It just might be a short agenda.
I, I don't really, I don't preference, 5th or the 19th doesn't bother me.
No.
I just wanted to make sure if anyone had, uh, you know, extended holidays for that week, um, being that the first is on the Saturday before, um, some people might be out that following week. So I just wanted to make sure, give that option.
I don't know my schedule yet, so wait for the wife to tell me.
How does the July 6th, how close is it?
That one's fine because the fourth is that, um, Sunday.
Monday, Monday holiday, right?
Yeah, Monday holiday, we're right back to work. Tuesday, the fifth.
Okay, so not a problem for you guys.
There's no issue there. Uh, the only one is.
June 8th.
It's similar for January. It's just more whether the five of you are able to attend in case you had an extended, uh, Christmas or New Year's, uh, holiday time off vacation somewhere. Everything else doesn't, um, interfere, interfere with any other holiday that I'm aware of.
Well, and I'm okay with the fifth.
Me too.
The fifth?
Yeah, not a problem for me.
No, I can do the fifth. Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, uh, whoever, uh, makes the motion to adopt the resolution for the calendar, just be specific about the January date.
Okay, how about a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Taft Approving the 2022 Regular Meeting Schedule with January 5th as the January meeting date." I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Roll color or voice.
Uh, Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Chairman Orrin?
Yes. Hey, Curie's on a four zero. Thank you. And now item six, Mr. Staples again, planning director report.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Orrin. Um, the one item I have is, uh, the city manager and I just got back from, um, the ICSC event in Las Vegas, which it wasn't their larger event, which is the International Council of Shopping Centers where all the commercial real estate brokers and the different, uh, retailers, restaurants, gyms and other, uh, commercial uses get together to try to do deal making with, uh, their available space and shopping centers and whatnot. And the thing is, the pandemic's gone so long that this is almost the first show in about, uh, two, two-plus years.
Yeah.
The past two maes, they had to cancel their larger ones, which were truly international, needed every inch of, um, convention, convention hall space in Las Vegas, whereas this one was similar to the West Coast events that the city manager, myself, his assistant, um, the chamber director, we would all go down to San Diego or LA where we had all the Western specific, uh, regional managers there. We had a little bit of that here in Vegas, uh, but it was good to get back in that swing of things and getting the communication lines open again. So I have nothing necessarily to report as far as getting someone in town. I've had to reintroduce myself to the Western managers that I had not talked to since, uh, the fall of 2019. So, um, I have a lot of follow-up work to do, um, but it sounds like we'll have a full calendar, um, in 2022 to, um, have the follow-up meetings to try to get them, get them somewhere here in Taft. Um, our developer with the grocery outlet and Dollar General, he's still pushing for the remaining land that you see around that. We have our city land on, along Rose the Trails and, uh, we'll be marketing best we can.
Yeah, what's he got, three lots still?
There's two lots left, um, but we're, uh, more providing support to him cause he's actually very actively shopping out to, uh, um, any and every tenant he can think of to.
Has he got a total of four pads remaining in those two parcels?
It's two parcels, the corner at Supply Row and 10th, and then the remaining lot, uh, next to grocery outlet is.
On Front Street?
On Front Street is supposed to be a, uh, um, a up to four, um, inline multi-tenant, uh, commercial space. So.
Okay, it looks like two pads with a, uh, sidewalk between them.
Has incomplete, uh, parking paved there.
Is that what that is?
When the building would come in, there'd be additional parking to.
Okay.
Provide sufficient for that building.
Yeah, I looked at that and I keep thinking, I didn't remember two pads there.
Capitol Rivers thought that we were relatively easy to work with.
They've been, they've been really good to work with.
And they've been, they've been good also.
Just keep in mind, they took advantage of some of our land down at Rails the Trails, but they also brought the O'Reilly. So they brought three projects to town.
Sure.
So, and they're always reaching out to us when they're reaching out to someone to get them information about the city and how active we are. We're not some small town on the west side of Kern County. We have plenty to offer and, uh, we definitely try to work in a partnership mode with Capitol Rivers and anybody else look into, uh, bring businesses to their property. So.
I think.
We had a good show, but it's, it was kind of a reintroduction event, if you will.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you went because you have to reintroduce, otherwise another year slips away.
Yes, yes.
That was.
So that, that was good planning on you guys' part.
That reminds me, our consultant, the one that's put together the material for you.
Yes.
Is this final year of their contract up?
We've, uh, we're at the end of the line with that. We did a, uh, a slight amendment to it to get updated, uh, data for this event. Um, and the city manager will be working with them on how we renew it or what our future plans are with them.
We've been happy with their, their production.
Yes.
As far as I know, so I have no complaints, but.
But with all things budget, I leave that to the city manager.
Yeah. Well, that's the scary part. That was why I was asking.
So, uh.
Cool.
Other than that, uh, I hope everybody had a, a good Thanksgiving two weeks ago. Um, and everybody has a good Christmas coming up and New Year's and hope to see everybody, uh, happy and healthy on January 5th. And that's all I have for my report.
Very good. Thanks, Mark. Okay, uh, Mr. Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think my microphone is working, but, uh, I just wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and I, it's gonna be a little while before we see each other, but have a nice, uh, beginning to your winter.
You too.
Thank you. You do the same.
Yes.
Okay, um, commissioner comments? Item eight?
I'm gonna say the same thing I always say. People need to show up to these workshops because if they're not there, they may be on the menu.
Yeah. Well, it, it's also, uh, good ideas come from people and we'd like to see them come in and share because, you know, we're not a brain trust. Other people can think.
In fact, they won't be told it's a stupid idea.
No.
That's the, the one thing you should really, don't, if you've got an idea, bring it because nobody's gonna say, that's not gonna happen. They'll at least look at it, talk about it, give it a shot before they make any comment on it. So that's my comment.
All right.
I have nothing.
Yeah, I think, nothing. Sean? Um, Christmas parade is a week from yes, Monday.
It's, uh, Monday.
The 13th.
That's coming up. Um, and we have the holidays ahead of us and, um, I am really pleased to see that we have a new co- I am really pleased to see that we have a new code enforcement officer who I will tell you is on it. Yeah, he left a card at my house and I wonder, what does this guy want? And I called him up and he said, we got a problem on one of your properties and he followed up and eradicated the problem and now we can address it. So I'm very pleased to see, his name is Cody.
Cody Smith.
Smith.
Extension one, three, two. And then you can also use the report of concern on the city website because it does cover all things street, road maintenance, nuisance issues, all that, and it'll reach him as well.
And I have seen him driving the community, doing what we perceive as his job.
Yes.
Good.
So that, that was very pleasant to see. I didn't wave him down and introduce myself. I'm sure that he and I will get together eventually. But um, there's that and holidays, kids are gonna be home. Hope everybody enjoys their families, spends time with them. And that's it for me. We need to identify Jerry as our person to go to the city council.
Once again, I volunteer.
Here we are. If somebody else wants to go.
Jerry's been doing great.
Jerry's good with you?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Anybody wants to do it, I have no problem doing it.
Kathy, if you want to go.
I'm good right now.
Okay. All right, then the last item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? That carries on a four zero.